Welcome, everyone, to the October 10 City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone here in the room and around the table and at home. The first item up this evening is the Eugene Community Climate and Energy Action Plan Progress Report. I know we're all anxious to hear about how we're doing, so hand it over to you, City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and I will turn over to Babel Sullivan, who's our Sustainability Manager, and to kick us off.
Thank you.
Mayor and members of council, you may remember it was just about a year ago that we came to you with the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan for your approval, and we're back here tonight to share the first annual progress report and to look more specifically at the 20-minute neighborhoods, an action item in the plan closely related to the work that's been going on in Vision Eugene. Matt McCray, our Climate and Energy Analyst, will present the report and share some highlights with you. Matt continues to do outstanding work on these issues, and we're lucky to have him. But first, I'd like to introduce Kathy Jaworski, who just joined us, our newly-elected Vice Chair of the Sustainability Commission. If you've caught your breath, Kathy has some input to share from the Sustainability Commission before we kick off the presentation.
Good afternoon. I'm just here to express on behalf of the Sustainability Commission our pleasure with the work that's been done on the Community Energy Action Plan to date. We're pleased to have been a catalyst for the effort, and we urge continued support for implementation. It's only been a year, so of course, we can't evaluate the progress that's been made in quantitative terms, all that much, but we definitely see a high level of collaboration, which should continue, and that's really impressive among public sector, private sector, and nonprofit partners. The metrics are a good start, but over time, we expect them to be refined to demonstrate progress toward the plan's goals. So, we did send a letter, but I'm reviewing some of the things that we've sent you in the letter. We definitely think that the measurement is very important and expect to continue to see progress in the refinement of the measures, but it's helpful to have what we have now because it's simple and it's easy to sort of for a citizen to understand. There are some goals for which there really hasn't been much progress to date, and that includes expansion and maintenance of the urban forest, promoting water conservation, and natural gas consumption, looking at that. And we're wondering whether there's an opportunity for the City Council to spur activity in these areas through some of its actions. There are some goals and activities for which there's been significant progress, and that's worth celebrating. We hope you will continue to press forward with the good work. A great example is the Pedestrian and Bicycle Master Plan, which is nearly complete. And finally, looking at all the goals, and this is an issue with our own work plan as well as with the work plan of a big project such as this, there's an awful lot of activities and priorities in that plan, and probably down the road, it will be clear that certain things are more implementable than others or more important than others, and we urge that there be a process in place for calling down so that the work can be done. That's most important, and that there's public engagement in that process. The thing that I think is our primary message is that it's great, great progress, and congratulations to the staff who've been working on it. It's really, really a groundbreaking, as you know, award-winning plan. There's a next step in terms of taking all of those little actions and putting them together to be reflected in the policies of the city across many, many dimensions. And we hope that, and we intend to be a resource for you, to try to look at how the kinds of things that are being discovered and learned and implemented can be addressed at a policy level as well at the City Council. For example, in the land use, in the transportation, in the building codes, in the city zone practices, in the incentives that are in place for various types of development, there's many, many opportunities to connect the specific action plan with the policies that you make on behalf of the city, and we would love to be a resource for you in helping to wade through that. It's something we're real excited about as a commission, and I'm just here to express my support, and I apologize for being late. I went to the wrong building first.
You made it, that's all.
I made it on the nick of time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And now, we'll turn it over to Matt.
All right.
Thank you, Matt.
I'm gonna jump right into it. Thanks, Kathy. A really quick overview. I'm gonna spend 15 minutes, maybe it'll be closer to 10, just giving an overview of the progress report, and then some time for Q and A. And then, as was mentioned earlier, the second half will be focusing on the 20-minute neighborhoods assessment specifically, and again, half the time there for Q and A. So, I'm gonna move fairly quickly through a lot of material, but I'll try and, if I'm going too fast through something, if you just put a hand up or something, just to remind me to slow down if that's needed. Anyway, so, a starting place. Oh! Smirky pants. So, just a...
Every bun.
Right? Just one?
Pants.
I did say pants. Yeah, yeah, perfect. So, just a reminder of the goals within the Climate and Energy Action Plan, not only to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and reduce fossil fuel use specifically, but to identify adaptations to climate change and adaptations to rising fuel prices. So, there are many goals within the plan, and you remember that the plan is fairly broad, that we're looking at buildings and energy, food and agriculture, land use and transportation, consumption and waste, health and social services, and urban natural resources. So, it covers a huge swath of our community. Next, I want to highlight some of the national context that influences our efforts here in Eugene. In departure from just a year ago, the mainstream media appears more willing to put the impacts of climate change front and center, and this last year of extreme weather events has certainly caused journalists and scientists alike to consider connections that were previously rarely mentioned. On the energy front, if we look at the price of oil, for example, that's starting in 1997 there, it peaked in 2008, but we're climbing right back up to those levels again, so the rebound of fuel prices is occurring. A couple important things to add to this. So, there's the crude oil price index. Not surprisingly, if we put gasoline price, it goes right along there, and that has impacts on citizens' wallets as well as the cities'. But if we put the food price index along there, it's important to note that those food prices, that's the green line, the bold line, those food prices are coming back up as well. And as a city that works on the road system, the asphalt price index is doing the same thing, so coming back up. So, there's impacts, not just in our transportation costs, but in many areas that are important to us, not only as a city organization, but community-wide as well. So, just to touch on the report, hopefully you've had a chance to look through it. I know it's thick, and I apologize for that. So, there's highlights that are demonstrating the breadth of actions that are underway. Context, not unlike what I just showed you, just talking about what's happening across the state, the nation, and globally that affect our local efforts. There's a small number of measures that look at energy use, water use, and waste production, and just to help us think about how much energy we're using within our community. And then, there's a painful, can I say that, action-by-action update on the status of each of the 2,746 recommendations. No, there's roughly 100. But when I was doing it, it felt much longer than that. Anyway, there's an action-by-action update, so if there are specific things you want to see, what status they're at now, you can take a look at that. We will be sharing this plan, this progress report, with community members. If you have ideas for whom we might share it with, who might be interested, I'm interested in hearing about that. We'll also be planning to share this with the 70-plus topic specialists that helped us create this plan in the first place, and we're discussing doing that perhaps as a one-day event to get everybody back together and discuss common goals, interests, and next steps. And we also plan to continue to monitor and report on progress to you, as well as challenges and successes. We will continue to update the Sustainability Commission, come back to you on a fairly regular basis, and then, you're gonna have more frequent updates as policy questions come up. So, things like Envision Eugene, for example, are places, as Kathy just alluded to, where some of those policy questions are gonna come right before you. The next slide, it's important to remember that this progress report is not looking only at City of Eugene efforts, that it's really looking at partners broadly across the community, right? And there are dozens of them. This is just a smattering of some, but there are certainly more. The community partners involved here are huge, and I want to recognize that many of the, much of the progress, there are some of the steps of progress that are contained in the back of the plan are those of nonprofits and other organizations across the community. And that's all on that. So, then, I'm gonna go into highlights. During your joint meeting with E-Web, you learned about several efforts where we're collaborating with E-Web to implement this plan, so I'm not gonna go into details, though, but there. But I would like to highlight another collaboration that is saving local businesses money. The BRING Recycling Rethink Program is doing a lot for us in our community. There are multiple recommendations within the plan that are addressed by this program, both reducing energy use and water use, as well as waste generation, are being addressed by this program operated by BRING. I also want to point out that the program is being funded in part by the City of Eugene, by Lane County, as well as E-Web, so it really is a multiple-organization effort to do this work. In 18 months of this program, they helped 67 businesses make changes to save money by reducing energy use, water use, and waste generation. And importantly, the program provides businesses like the Eugene Coffee Company here with recognition for their efforts. Another highlight relating to waste, in the last year, two local businesses, Rexius Sustainable Solutions and Lane Forest Products, both received permits to start composting commercial food waste. That's the waste that's coming out of grocery stores and restaurants. This is really significant, not only to keep things out of the landfill, but as many of you know, when food goes into the landfill, it generates methane, which is a really potent greenhouse gas, so it will keep, prevent those emissions from occurring by composting them, and then, of course, that compost is available to amend local soils. So, it's, there are many benefits here. Another highlight to point out, I know you guys hear a lot about Envision Eugene, and it's gonna be mentioned more tonight. I think our community can be proud that we have a comprehensive plan that's looking squarely at the needed changes and uncertainties brought about by climate change and rising fuel prices. There's a lot there, and I'm not gonna go into it in great detail, but certainly, this is one way that we're implementing a lot of the recommendations within the plan. And the associated 20-minute neighborhoods plan, we'll have more time to discuss in the last half of this, and that's another highlight to point out as well. So, with that, I'm gonna go to looking at some of our community energy use. I'm hoping that it is pretty readable. So, I'm gonna describe this chart. It's a small set of measures that are good indicators of our community-wide energy use. There are more measures within the progress report that is an attachment to the AIS. But this chart here is showing gasoline and diesel use, natural gas use, which is the green bar, and electricity use, which is the bottom, that purple bar, all of them, over time, and the linear trend lines that go along with them. And you'll see they're all sloped downward. One assumption is that these reductions are due to the economic downturn in 2008, and if that were the case, not only might we expect the energy demand to rebound when our economy does, but economic stagnation is no way for us to meet our energy reduction targets, right? But looking closer at this, we can see that the decrease began before 2008, so there's the 2008 line now vertically, and you can see the electricity use was relatively flat, but gasoline and diesel use were headed downward, as was natural gas use. So, there are trends here that are really important for us to look at. Electricity use is down 15% over 10 years, gas and diesel use down 14% over seven years, and natural gas use down 14 and 1/2% over five years. And what's really significant to me is that, looking at the gas and diesel use, we're actually in line with the fossil fuel reduction target that you all set to be 50% below 2010 levels by 2030. So, it's attainable, it's doable, and as I mentioned, because it's starting before that crash, it suggests that perhaps we can do it without a huge amount of economic pain. A couple other measures that are included in the progress report. The amount of trash being produced is flat over the last decade, generally, or roughly, and so is vehicle miles traveled. So, as we look around, as we look at the amount of travel individuals are doing, the per capita VMT, vehicle miles traveled, is pretty well flat over the last 10 years. So, there's some really, at least for me, I feel really heartening reason to believe that we can meet some of the targets that we've set out. I do want to point out that after only one year, it's difficult to measure the impact of this plan specifically when we look at these coarse overall energy measures, but clearly, we're on the right track. It's also important to note that if we meet the ambitious fuel reduction targets that you all set out, that will help us reduce our exposure to rising energy prices, that we'll need to have a sustained effort. Like any effort to shrink the budget, the cuts are easier to make at the beginning and become more difficult as the easy steps have been taken. So, it's gonna take a continued effort for us to continue on these trends. Remember, too, that there's work to do to reduce the physical and financial risks brought about by the projected changes in climate. This is a photo taken of a home earlier this year along the banks of the Mississippi, and we've seen all across the country, communities really, really dealing with some really challenging circumstances. Right, so it's kinda hard to read the photo there, but that's water all around that small dike that surrounds that home.
That's not a scull, what the rest of it is.
So, it's important that we keep thinking about climate adaptation, that we take actions to make sure that Eugene remains resilient. In order to begin addressing the need to adapt to climate change, I began working with Joe Rizzi, updating our Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan to ensure that it is addressing the new risks associated with climate change. We're also looking at partnerships up and down the valley as a way to address some of the concerns that are more regional in nature, as a growing support among local governments up and down the valley for a voluntary Willamette Valley Compact that can help us all stretch funds and more efficiently prepare our communities. To summarize progress on the Climate and Energy Action Plan, there are a lot of actions in motion and plenty yet to be done to increase our community resilience to climate change and rising fuel prices. So, that's the end of my presentation for this first half on the progress report, and I'm happy to take questions.
Just a couple comments, and George Foley's in queue here. I guess, I think one of the, thank you for the presentation.
Sure.
I think one of the biggest challenges is not only to make progress on our plan, but it's not to lose the progress that's already been made. It's a double whammy of not trying to lose ground and adding population at the same time, which creates an additional challenge for us. I appreciate the recognition of partners because they really, we don't do a lot of this ourselves, and we certainly don't do it alone. And I also wanted to ask if you guys are gonna give this presentation to the E-Web Board.
Is that a group they, I mean, yeah, be happy to.
I actually think they would, I mean, they're part of it with us. I don't know how, I just think it would be useful and...
Yeah.
We can sure offer it to them.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, George Foley.
Well, I really don't have any questions. What I'd like to just, first, thank you for the report, very thorough, and for all the hard work that everybody's put into this. I just wanna set the record straight that in the AIS, the first sentence, and also on page 7, the first paragraph, it states that in September 2010, the council unanimously endorsed the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan. In the past, we've had pretty lengthy discussions on the difference between endorsed, accept, approve, and I just wanna make it clear that we did not unanimously endorse the plan. What the motion read was, "I moved to direct the city manager to implement actions that support the Community Climate and Action Plan goals and objectives, subject to best practices, resources, collaboration with community partners, and approval by council of future policy changes." So, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, that, you know, somebody may see this AIS, or may hear the comment earlier where, you know, the council approved the Community Action Plan. I just wanna make clear, because there was some discussion at that meeting, and I kinda remember one specific question is, if we vote on this, what does that actually mean? And I believe, John, your response, something to the effect was that we will use this as our guidelines for our future actions, or something to that effect. I don't wanna try and quote you exactly. So, I do appreciate the work that's being done on it, and, you know, it is measurable good, it's just that I wanna make sure I made that, set the record straight on that one point. And it may be just a matter of wording, but again, we've had that conversation on other motions and other plans and things of the difference between endorse, approve, accept, and that type of thing. Thank you.
Alan?
Well, I not only support it, I endorse it, and I accept it. But it does create the roadmap for what the city and the community are gonna do on these issues, these very important issues, so I think excellent report.
Thank you.
Went a little fast, but I think it not only exemplifies the good work that the city organization's doing, but that the community's doing, and I think that the Eugene community is at the back for these metrics as well. And I want to underscore one of the things you said, which was, and I completely concur with, that the electrical use is a terrible economic indicator. Over the years, it's been clearly shown that as the economy rises, electricity use and other types of fuels doesn't necessarily increase, because as we get more economic, we get smarter, and we get more efficient, and we actually end up having a reduction. And over the 80s and 90s in the boom, we actually almost had a flat electricity use in the country, while we had tremendous economic increases. So, tracking electricity and thinking it's related to economics is not an appropriate thing to do, because this is a bad indicator. I did wanna concur that it is hard to tell if this is good to do what we're doing in one year, but we are going in the right direction. And underscore one of the primary points that you didn't make, but I'll make, which is that the vast majority of the actions in this plan are actually economically beneficial for the community, i.e. they're cost-effective to do, and they're smart things to do. And in the end, with the implementation of this plan, we will have more money in the pockets of the people of Eugene, and more money in the pockets of the City of Eugene to do more services. So, I think that economic aspect of this plan is sometimes getting underscored, but it's gonna be a very, very powerful tool. And I'm hoping that some of the stuff that the Sustainability Commission was talking about in tracking metrics, when we track these things, I think we wanna track how much money we're actually saving on these actions that we're taking through, within the city and in the community, because I think it'll be a very powerful story to tell in five years.
Just to add to that, it would also hit two of the, at least two of the legs of the triple bottom line, so there's a good reason to show the economic impact as well as the question on climate and all of that. Yes? Go ahead, George.
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. About the, you know, Rexius and Lane Forest Products doing produce waste from restaurants and grocery stores, apparently, a lot of it goes to the landfill, but don't, isn't there a methane capture system at the landfill?
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a bad thing to do that, because the methane is not going into the atmosphere.
That, that capture system, as I understand it, is not perfect, and that we do have emissions that are fugitive emissions that get out before we put a cap on top of that, of the landfill, so we do still see emissions.
Yeah, I'm not criticizing, I mean, the fact of this program, I go to both those places all the time for solar amendments for commercial and private card, and I love both those places. Maybe the question is, that was a real impressive figure about the energy use down from 12% to 14% of the gas, natural gas, and electricity over the last eight years. That's a nice trend. I know a lot of it's due to efficiency and people being more efficient in homes and personal lives, but how much has the population grown in the last 10 years? Does anyone have a rough idea? I tried to find it in the word...
1% per year. 1% per year? About 1% per year. I think it's generally over the last 10 or 15 years, plus or minus.
Somewhere at 15,000 maybe. You know, that makes it definitely impressive, our population, the energy use is headed down. I think that's, that's an encouraging trend.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Eddie?
Thank you. I, like Alan, I endorse the plan, but I do appreciate George's distinction, because there have been times when I was willing to accept a plan that I was not willing to endorse.
You just need a sign on the wall.
Which plan?
I appreciate your, the whole report, and your presentation. I appreciate the brevity of it, and the recognition that we had already read the plan, which is... But I have some questions, and I do this in order, on page 40, solar access. I'm concerned about the barriers, and do you see us getting rid of the barriers to solar access? I assume we all read the article by Whitey LeWick about the building next to his garden, which took away the solar access, took away his ability for solar heat and also his gardening. And do you see a solution to that?
Boy, I don't personally see, like, the solution, but I know that it's something that is on the agenda to be handled through the course of Envision Eugene. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Carolyn?
Yeah, Carolyn Weiss may be able to better answer the question.
I can tell you that we have looked into that particular issue, and it, through some of the recommendations that came out of ICS, the Infill Compatibility Standards Project, some slope setbacks can help to address that problem, and we are following up on those, and we'll be bringing them forward, and is part of the Envision Eugene package.
Thank you. Next thing, page 43, farmland protection, and I hope we, that's, I'm glad you're recognizing that, but I hope we remain aware of protecting farmland and potential farmland when we talk about expanding the urban growth boundary. That's just a remark, not a question. And on page 43, I wanted to...
I just said the answer's yes.
On page, it wasn't a question. Page 43, the, I wanted, next, well, wait a minute, let me look to see what I did. My time's going away while I'm looking. Oh, a full-time position, now, dedicated, I wanted an explanation, a description, or what does a person do? We have a person, one full-time person.
Right, dedicated to urban agriculture and composting as well. So, the person who was in our Solar Waste and Green Building Group, who was doing compost is now basically has an expanded set of duties. Some of the, as I understand it, some of her work around composting has been reduced, but then been also an expansion into trying to encourage and facilitate urban agriculture. That's my understanding. I can give you more details.
I was interested in knowing more about that.
Okay.
Does that include chickens?
I don't know that she's addressing that particular issue. I know that she's putting together some guidelines around what other communities are doing around livestock.
Okay, I would like to hear more about that.
Okay.
Could you give, skipping to page 47, did I say something funny? The implementation of the 20-minute neighborhood.
Yeah.
I know you gave some examples of where it exists currently, such as 24th and Hilliard, but could you tell me something about what's being done to...
It's the next presentation, right?
Yeah, we'll spend, yeah, the next half of our hour, we'll talk about 20-minute neighborhoods, and at the end of that, there's a bunch of time for us to discuss specifically what you're asking.
Okay, I'll, okay, thanks.
Sure.
We'll spend 20 minutes.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. That was good news, Carolyn, for going, we are addressing the blockage of solar. I have just a couple of questions. You made a statement, "Economic stagnation is no way to meet our energy conservation efforts." Sometimes I hear people saying that conservation efforts do cost a lot of money. Are you keeping track of that balance?
Of what the economic, or what the energy conservation efforts cost us?
Yeah.
As we start to finalize, you know, full programs, much of what we've begun in the last year isn't really to a completion point where we can say, okay, we saved this much energy, but, so, not yet, but certainly, as we complete programs, we'll do that and report that, as Alan Counselor Linga suggested, we'll report that back to you.
That's fantastic that you are able to demonstrate to people that they are actually saving money, at the same time that they're putting out extra money perhaps to provide the conservation methods. So, being able to balance that certainly is one of the greatest arguments to people who say, well, I can't afford to save energy.
Right, right.
The Council of London says you can't really afford not to save energy by one addition. The other thing that is interesting is, is we talk about the urban growth boundary, and we talk about blocking solar access. One of the ways we prevent the spread of the urban growth boundary is by building a... up. It's very encouraging to hear you, Carolyn, talking about the fact that we are addressing solar access at the same time we are trying to maximize the use of infill and building inside the existing urban growth boundary. Thank you.
Alan?
Well, we used to actually have solar access work. Freeman Holmer was the swing vote on that. One of the things that you said, Pat, for a lot of my career working in energy efficiency, we would prevent programs, the EWEB programs or the other electric utility programs, they would be able to pay that over time, and usually, and quite often, the payment that they were making on a monthly basis to pay that off was less than the amount that they were saving. So, they were actually money ahead on a rent discount because of efficiency.
Thank you.
And they had more comfort in their house. Once again, that's a great, thank you.
We have an example of that in that affordable housing, energy retrofit that we just did, where we got ARA funds to refit some old, older stock of affordable housing for, and I think they said they took their heat bills down in the first month by half. So, it's a, it's a big deal.
I will point out, if you go out of Food, Volant Counties building, their entire south-facing roof is solar energy gathering. We used to have a really tremendous problem upstairs there. There was no air conditioning in the building. So, in the summer, the upstairs mezzanine really was four or five degrees hotter than outside. That not only generates electricity, it cooled down the buildings again. So, once again, it's encouraging to be able to point out to people that over the course of the, the improvements that are going to take.
Bet you lost your sauna.
They said one little.
Andrew?
Thank you very much for coming, and all the folks that are in the audience, I'm assuming we're part of the cohort. This is really good news, that people are moving in this direction around saving energy. I can admit, I didn't read it as thoroughly as you probably would have liked us to, but I guess what I would like to know is if there's incentive for people who are homeowners to take, or rentals. In one of my neighborhoods, in my ward, I have like 86% of rentals, and they are the homes that people don't put a lot of money into to do these upgrades. So, are you, is there any conversation, or has that been discussed, that maybe there's opportunities with people who own some of these homes to encourage them to do that? Because they don't pay the utility bills, so they don't really care what kind of heat sources they have or don't have, or if the windows are tied, or if they're insulated well.
Right. As I understand it, it's one of the bigger places we have within our existing homes, housing stock is those that are rented. The renters paradox is what you're referring to, where it's not necessarily in the renters' interest to try and save energy, and it's not necessarily in the homeowner's or the building owner's interest to try and do upgrades. So, yes, there's a bunch there. We're looking at how other communities are managing to get around that particular issue and try and align priorities so that both the renter and the building owner can save money. It's something that we're starting to look at right now, and working with EWEB to try and figure out how to do that.
Well, I know you actually did a pilot project in Trainsong, trying to encourage people to use the ductless heaters or air conditioners, or whatever they are, and I don't think they had a bite because so many of the folks are renters, and the people who are homeowners, it's a capital improvement. I mean, it's, you know, it's expensive.
It's expensive.
And if, you know, so, anyway, well, thank you, and I'm interested to hear about your 20-minute neighborhoods.
Great, thanks.
We'll move into that conversation. The only other thing I wanted to respond to the message we had from the Sustainability Commission around wanting to see expansion and maintenance of the Eugene's Urban Forest. I do know that we are, and the Tree Foundation, I believe, is in the process of joining up with the Tree Foundation under another name in Portland, so that we can build a greater capacity to put trees in neighborhoods where there aren't quite enough trees right now. And they've done some mapping, and they know, I guess that showed up the 20-minute, did it show up the 20-minute neighborhood where trees are and where they are in some of the mapping that was done?
Yeah, yeah, right.
All right, why don't we move into, yes?
I'd add one more thing to what Andrew said. While it is expensive, there's a thing called the Business Energy Tax Credit, Betsy. It's a statewide program that allows, gives tax credits for energy efficiency programs that landlords do to their rentals, up to 50% of the cost. And they can take that over a five-year period. So, and along with the incentives that EWEB gives, can really reduce the upfront cost of those project programs.
All righty, that's for responsible homeowners.
Yeah. Absolutely.
We'll move on to the 20-minute neighborhood.
Great, thanks. So, I'm going to ask some other staff to join me. Carolyn or Robin, either both. Carolyn Weiss is going to join us. She's a section manager with Metro and Community Planning. And Mike Solvin's here as well. He's the Community Development Manager, and is Rob here? Rob's here as well, so the Transportation Planning Manager. And I've invited them all to join us at the table because I know you all have questions, and they will be able to answer them better than I. So, I, that's right, all of them, exactly. So, I spearheaded the effort to do this assessment specifically, but as we look into next steps, they're all helping to figure out how we're going to do that. So, I'm going to jump right into this. Again, a lot of information in a short amount of time, so I'm going to move fairly quickly. But if I'm moving too quickly, please don't hesitate to raise your hand and let me know. Thanks. So, yeah, I guess I'm just going to jump right into the next slide and point out that obviously this is coming from the Climate and Energy Action Plan. The recommendation that we're thinking about 20-minute neighborhoods specifically, and it's also contained within Envision Eugene Plan, so that increasing proportion of residents are living in 20-minute neighborhoods. So, there's a reason that we're here. I also want to point out that 20-minute neighborhoods is a concept that came from another community, and in order to do it just a little bit better, we're actually going to make it 19-minute neighborhoods because we're Eugene and we can just one-up the last community. So, we're looking at three different things: distance, density, and destinations. We're measuring how people get around by the mode that they're using. So, 20-minute neighborhoods is looking at, 19-minute neighborhoods is looking at how far can we get, not so much by car, but more by bike and on foot, and also in some cases, transit. So, we're really focusing on these other two. I also want to point out that while I'm making a joke about the 19-minute neighborhoods, there's no magic around the number. It's really more a concept of the idea of having the services near your home that you want to use on a regular basis. It's not about how far can any one individual make it in 19 and a half minutes. It's also about density, about how many people are working and living within an area, and we'll go into more detail on all of these here briefly. It's also about destinations, trying to make sure that people have the parks, the stores, and the amenities nearby where they live and work. So, it specifically is around daily trips. It's not just about the ability to take a stroll, it's about making trips, and it's also not about the ability to drive your dog. It's really focusing on the ability to make trips without a car, not being dependent on the car to get where we need to go. And more specifically, it's making it possible to make trips without a car. We're certainly not suggesting that everybody has to give away their car tomorrow so that they can do this. It's just trying to make sure that we're building communities where people can do that, and they aren't as reliant on the automobile. There's a whole bunch of benefits, and you're probably aware of all of them, but I'm going to run over them anyway. Reduced traffic congestion is a huge one. As we get more people out of their vehicles, the traffic congestion goes down for those who remain on the roads. Public safety, so in neighborhoods where people are walking and around, moving at slower speeds, it's easier for us to deter crime through eyes on our land. And also, it's a little harder to quantify, but increase in positive interactions. People tend to stop and talk more when they're walking or biking or moving at slower speeds than they do with a quick honk and a wave as you pass by an automobile. So, there's something significant here that, like I said, it's a little harder to quantify, but it helps us build a community of social interactions that are important and valuable. Economic, oh, health benefits as well, sorry, more social benefits. Obviously, active transportation is going to help us all to maintain fitness that we lose if we're driving everywhere we go. Also, reduced automobile accidents. As people step out of cars and use other means, we reduce the number of auto accidents. We also have more affordable access, so trying to make sure that everybody has access, and particularly people with limited mobility, that they're not constrained and have as much access as we can provide. Economic benefits. There are several. Obviously, transportation cost savings for the individual, not having to buy as much fuel if we can get to the things we want without using a car. But also, for the families that can let go of a second vehicle, you know, there's reduced cost of vehicle ownership. There's also a really huge thing that we don't talk about very often, about keeping dollars local. Here's a quick chart, I don't know how readable that is for all of you, but the punchline here, that 68% of a dollar of gas immediately leaves our community. 68%. And I'm just going to throw the number out, the number of dollars we spend on gasoline and diesel every year within just Eugene is about $200 million. 68% of that immediately leaves Eugene. So, there's huge opportunity for us to continue to circulate dollars that are right now being exploited. And obviously, environmental benefits, both air quality, which is really significant, greenhouse gas emissions, obviously a prime reason for it to be included in the Climate and Energy Action Plan, and one that's not mentioned as much, but noise. You know, the more we get people out of vehicles, the more we can reduce automobile-related noise to some degree. So, what does a 19-minute neighborhood feel like? Downtown is one of them. If we look at the map, you all have a heat map, we're going to touch on that in just a minute, but downtown really has these characteristics. There's complete sidewalks on both sides of the street, there's short block lengths, there's housing and services all within a short distance, and that's where you get that feeling of being able to meet a lot of your needs without having to hop into a car. But also, other examples around Third and Blair, Royal and Danabo, that Royal Node that was built several years back, has all those things contained in that area. And then 24th and Hilliard, it's another good example. So, here's the heat map. I'm just going to show it to you here, and we're going to come back to it, and I'm going to show you really quickly kind of how it was put together. But if you look really here, right here in the center, in downtown, it's red, and that's the area where, again, we have all of these conditions coming together. And areas that are lighter colors, and you get into greens and blues, are where we have less of that quality. So, I'm going to go, again, I'm going to show you how we did this and then come back to this map. So, here's the criteria that we put together. Each one of these is an individual map. Again, you have this within your AIS materials. But intersection density, sidewalks, bike lanes, and transit are the first stack of maps that we used. And then we looked at destinations. So, where's the, what's the density and the distance to elementary schools, parks, full-service grocery stores, convenience stores, and then other commercial, which encapsulates a whole bunch of other commercial services, restaurants, cafes, and the like. So, then the last set of maps that go into this assessment are population density, where people are living, and employment density, looking at where people are working. Because it's, you know, obviously, it's not useful to have a whole bunch of services in a place if nobody's living or working nearby, but that's not getting us toward this goal. So, now I'm going to take just these four maps and show you those individual ones: intersection density, parks, full-service grocery, and population density, just so you can get a sense of what they look like. So, this is the intersection density map. This is a little bit complicated, but I think worth looking at. Intersection density is a measure of connectivity of our road system. So, it's looking at how many intersections are there within an area. So, if we look on the left up here, you can see an area, a road system, that doesn't have a lot of intersections. There's just a handful, about 15 intersections within that. And if we look down at the bottom, we get more like 35 to 40 intersections in that same area. And so, that's what we're talking about, is where we have a lot of intersections. And when you have a lot of intersections, you prevent that out-of-direction travel that is a disincentive to walking or biking. So, another map is, this is the distance to parks, and it's based on a quarter mile, a half mile, and then a full mile distance to parks. And I would like to point out that our Parks and Open Space System here in Eugene is really phenomenal. This is specifically one of the things that our Parks and Recreation, or Parks and, P-R-O-S, Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan calls out specifically having parks within a certain distance of all homes, and we've really managed to do that, especially when we add on the playgrounds and stuff that come with from 4J and Bethel School Districts. It really, it's quite a complete system. Anyway, so that's one of the factors. One of the things that we're looking at is, are people close to the parks? Unfortunately, most of us are. Full-service grocery stores. If you haven't had a chance to take a look at this, this map by itself is pretty interesting. We definitely have the proverbial food deserts, right? Which is a common term now to refer to those areas where you really have to get a new car to get the food. You can't, you can't, it's not within a short distance, it's a bit of a drive. So, we have a couple of areas here where the residents that live in those areas are quite a distance from the nearest full-service grocery store. And then this is the map of residential density. Again, you all have all of these and more within your packet, but just looking at where people live is an important thing for us to add to this assessment. So, here's the full list, and then we're going to put them all again together into a sandwich and create that heat map. So, now that we can have thought about it a little bit more, we can think about those areas downtown. Again, high intersection density, there's sidewalks on both sides, there's a lot of services and a lot of residents in one area, and there are other places where those things start to break down a little bit. It's important to note that the places that are green or blue are that way for a variety of reasons. It's not the same reason all across town. Some areas may lack sidewalks and a grocery store, and others may lack, you know, a convenience store and bike lanes, but they're, so they're lower scores for different reasons, it's not all the same. I also want to acknowledge that ElCog did all the mapping work for us, and they did really a phenomenal job of helping us out with this assessment. I think it's important to note when our partners are contributing. So, that's the end of looking at the assessment. A couple of other things that I want to point out, other influences, or what's not included in these maps but still important for us to think about. Obviously, aesthetics, if we're thinking about walking tree canopy cover and street width and things like that, certainly influence whether or not people make a trip on foot or by bike. And also, safety and security, auto traffic speed, signaled sidewalks, and things like that influence whether or not we make a trip without a car. And other factors we need to think about as we work on prioritizing actions in order to increase the number of 20-minute neighborhoods, certainly income distribution, age, and ethnicities are important for us to think about. I'm not expecting you to read that map just to show that we do have those things and think about them. And also, other factors like auto ownership, and then also looking at our current biking and walking trends to help inform where and how we take actions. The last part of the 20-minute neighborhoods plan is a toolkit. Fortunately, it's not quite as complex as that one, it's a little bit easier, more like that. It's Appendix 1 of the 20-minute neighborhoods assessment, and it lists actions that the city can take to move our community towards more 20-minute neighborhoods. It's important to note a couple of things, that some of it are just concepts, while other than are more specific. Most of them will take further analysis and discussion with you all before they're ready to use. And I'm also not going to go through all of the actions within that toolkit, just to point out that it's there. I also want to point out, at the top of that toolkit, there are a handful of recommendations at the very beginning, but this toolkit itself is not a long list of recommendations, it's just tools that could be applied. Some of the items that the toolkit will be, some of the items from that toolkit will be a part of Envision Eugene implementation. If you recall, one pillar of Envision Eugene calls for making compact urban development easier in commercial centers and transit corridors. And as a council, you'll be discussing some of the tools that would facilitate that kind of development. And in fact, as you're all aware, the multi-unit property tax exemption is up on your agenda for Wednesday. So, one other thing on next steps that we can look to doing is considering the addition of a complete streets policy to the transportation system plan. A complete streets policy would ensure that when we build or reconstruct a roadway that is designed to carry people in cars, on foot, and on bike, and by transit, so that it's really thinking about all the modes of getting around. It's really important to note that funding is an important part of that, especially for sidewalk infill, where we want to retrofit some of those neighborhoods that don't currently have sidewalks. So, I want to conclude by stating the obvious, that creating 19-minute neighborhoods will involve a variety of existing programs within the city, including transportation, land use, and economic development, and that looking at our community this way can help us meet a number of social, economic, and environmental goals. And with that, we'll field questions.
Thank you. So, in looking at that, it makes me think that as we think about the complete street concept... concept, that we be careful to give ourselves some flexibility around it, that if we can't meet everything at the same time, how do we sort of leave ourselves open to getting there, but maybe have to take some steps as we're able to? So how do we, how do we build in some kind of flexibility around that, allows us to keep moving forward? Because I think sometimes, as we've learned over and over again, we think something is really a good concept, and then we find it doesn't necessarily work as well over here as it does over here, and things like that. So some, some way of not locking ourselves in seems like a, on the other hand, setting very high goals and aiming hard at them seems like a really good idea as well. So other questions or comments? Yes, Betty?
Have you discussed with the school system, the closing of elementary schools, and how that affects a 20-minute neighborhood?
In the process of doing this assessment, I did have some discussion with them about that, about how they make those decisions, and it became clear to me that those are huge decisions that have a whole bunch of variables that are put into that, into that decision-making process, and that it happens fairly rarely. And I guess, I guess those are the biggest things to me, is that it's so, it's so complicated, and that it happens rarely, I'm not sure that that's one of the things that we would elect to push really hard on, though I don't know if that's, you know, I don't know if that's necessarily true, I just...
It's one of the most important things, really, to families.
Yeah.
When there's no longer a school, then they, it means, it contributes to the carbon footprint, it contributes to...
No question.
It cuts down on neighborliness and all sorts of things. And I saw one suggestion here of buying the school properties from the school districts for future use. I think that's a good idea. I don't think they should have been closed, but I think if the land could be saved, and there's certainly uses for school grounds and for school buildings, and then if they could be there when they needed them again, I think that would be a good idea. Okay, that's, that's...
Alan, and then Andrea.
So on page 89 of the 20-minute neighborhood packet material, there's a whole list of priority recommendations, and I kind of wanted to walk through them a little bit. I have a couple of questions. Develop a comprehensive bicycle and pedestrian data collection program. We've got a bike-ped plan coming to us in October?
November.
November, early November. And is this part of that plan, and how does that affect us?
Well, the plan relates to this, there's actually a recommended policy to implement 20-minute neighborhoods by using some of the tools. I don't have it in front of me, but using some of the tools that we have for the pedestrian and bicycle side. It, I believe the plan also recommends establishing a more robust counting program for pedestrian, for walking and biking, and in fact, that's something we're already working on, that there's a lot of energy right now at ElCog on that issue, and we've been talking with them, there's some emerging technologies, so it's something we're already working on. But part of the challenge is, we've been using volunteers and staff time to do counts, and one thing we're looking at is the possibility of integrating counting into new infrastructure, so that it can be counted more automatically, and that'll give us a better understanding of trends over time. There's infrared and loops depending on, loops that can measure bikes, but there's infrared technologies that can measure both people walking and biking.
The next one is increased funding for creating complete streets. How, how do we do that? Do we do that through a pilot? In the wallet station area, for instance?
With the pedestrian bicycle master plan, our intention is to come back after, we're actually, since we came to you last, we decided we're going to ask the council to accept the plan, and then actually do the adoption when the TSP update is adopted. And of course, the council could suggest a more aggressive approach, but one of the rationales for that is then we'll have to go through one land use process, which takes a lot of staff time. But our intention is to come back to council after the council accepts the plan to talk about funding mechanisms. So that could, would be both for sidewalk infill and also for other elements of the plan.
If I may, one of the things that tripped that was the discussion that our current bond measure that's being used right now to repave the street bond, thank you, doesn't contain sufficient funds to really make, like widening or those kinds of improvements as we're doing street preservation projects. And so that was one of the things that came up, is that, and Mark Shonin pointed out to me that there's a group, a committee specifically looking at how bonding funds are done, and that might be one of the things that they address, but that bonds could be passed that have funding set aside, so that as we're repaving, we're also adding that infrastructure in, because right now, the bonds don't have the dollars to do that.
Right, at MPC, we were talking about that, and if you just look at the strict percentage of money spent on pedestrian bike planning, it's only 3% of the overall funds, but there are many projects that incorporate modernization and repave, and include bike lanes and new sidewalks and things like that, so 3% wasn't the right number, it's actually, we're supposed to get back to something, remember, but probably at the 5% to 7%. Probably not too inappropriate for funding, so it's a little...
By the way, just to add to what Matt said, we have used city funds to, with some of the bond projects, usually it says a local match to a grant that we've gotten, so for example, for the Bailey Hill Road project, and for the Alder Street project that was built this summer, the local match for that was systems development charges. And sometimes we've used them also, even when there's not a grant, like we added bike lanes to part of Willamette Street, south of 29th, using similar funds this summer.
Is the credit plan for local sidewalks, is that also, is that the part of the bike plan?
For the most part, the pedestrian bicycle master plan looks at sidewalks on collector and arterial streets. There are some sidewalks recommended where we heard from the community that they were important on local streets, but at a policy level, the plan recommends that we have sidewalks on all streets. So sometimes it may, I think what this report gets at is that sometimes it may be, because of a 20-minute neighborhood approach, you might actually prioritize a sidewalk on a local street over a, an arterial or a collector street, and it really just depends on the context.
And then the final one was remove policy barriers to develop 20-minute neighborhoods. And that includes land use and building codes and SDCs and all these different things. And that kind of begs the question for me, how does the Planning Commission deal with this policy, or this, especially in regard to removing the barriers? I think that's a part of the goal of the Planning Commission.
And that also comes up under the Compact Urban Development pillar in Envision Eugene. I think that these are very much consistent, and 20-minute neighborhoods is basically an objective of a lot of our planning efforts. So we do have in the Envision Eugene document, a strategy for reducing policy barriers. Some of them are parking requirements, some of the FAR requirements are a little out of whack and actually serve to disincent redevelopment. And so we have a list of those, we're beginning to work on, and Planning Commission is absolutely will be kind of our guiding committee to help us through that process, and then they'll come here.
Of both Envision Eugene and the Planning Commission.
Yeah.
And then this kind of all begs the question, when you look at the heat map, it kind of begs the strategy question. What do you do next? Do you focus on the blue areas or the orange areas? And, you know, try to get the parts that are, the orange that are almost there, you know, maybe they're missing one or two things, so you get those, and then they become old 20-minute neighborhoods, versus, you know, the blue areas, which might have multiple things missing, which we, much more hard to do in longer term. I think you kind of have to do both, but I guess, for me, for me, it'd probably be 70% focus on the orange, to get them up to speed, and then 30% on the long-range stuff to get something that'll get left, and then fall, and then become darker blue.
I guess it, with, when I think about that, you might think about it sort of like you thought about streets, that you've got to have something spread around, so that everybody feels that some of their needs are being met, so that you have people feeling that the city's paying attention to all parts, and kind of using that strategy, and then the, that builds up more capacity to do more.
And more promotion. Fortunately, when you look at this map, the orange parts are all around the street.
I think it also, I think it's similar to the streets in that, with the street strategy, you're working both at that level of trying to maintain so they don't fall off the curb, but you're also having to get those that are already falling off the curb that need reconstruction, so in some ways, it's similar, you're working on both sides to that equation.
Andrea, you're next.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation, appreciate all the information. We've actually done some mapping in Trainsong on the west side of Eugene, I did some work with another group through a grant process that I was involved in with HPRN. And, you know, it's really challenging when you cumulatively put all these issues together. You know, when you look at, there are some neighborhoods that are, that really do have all these challenges, and what do you address first? You know, I mean, you know, when you talk about sidewalks, for instance, you know, in mine in Passau, and I think in some parts of town, there are streets that are not complete, and they don't want sidewalks. You know, those streets are very, they're dead-end streets, they're dirt roads, they're just a hair above, you know, you know, and these still pay, they pay taxes, and they pay sewer fees, and they pay everything all of us pay, and so why would we want to encourage them to have sidewalks? Because, you know, they don't need all the bells and whistles on those dead-end streets. When you talk about access to healthy foods, you know, how can you really address encouraging retail? You know, you can remove all the barriers that you can, but unless we have somebody specific going out and saying, this is what we want this neighborhood to look like in the planning process, and that has to be kind of organic from within the community. You know, as a policymaker, you know, I can have desires and wishes for my neighborhood, but I can't tell businesses where to plan, and I can't tell people how they want their neighborhood to look. We only hear about it when they're not happy with what is going in there. So, you know, I really appreciate the conversation and the enlightenment, but, you know, I'm just really kind of challenged as to what our role is. I mean, we can, you know, policy barriers to development of a 20-minute neighborhood. I would be concerned about trying to encourage, I mean, if we, if we looked at that and said, like, over the city, we couldn't do one neighborhood versus another. I mean, I wouldn't want a policy that would just say, okay, in Trainsong, at Four Corners, we want this kind of development, and just have it be like an overlay zone. I think when we, that's where we get into trouble, and I get challenged personally, when we have a lot of those conversations from the neighborhoods, they come and they want their neighborhood to look a certain way. I wouldn't expect that, and I don't think my constituents would want us to be treated any differently than the rest of the neighborhoods. And so I think that's when we get into trouble, but, and so I'm just kind of challenged by this. You know, it's good work, and it's good thoughts, but I'm just, you know, it's just, where do you start?
I think Matt has something to say to you here.
Okay. I'll shut up.
Now, if I may, I've actually shared this assessment with, with a number of groups, including the Sustainability Commission, among others, and that same question is, I mean, you're spot on, nobody can agree on, okay, if we were, if we were going to try and do this, where would we start first, you know, assuming we wanted to try and, you know, remake some vision of, you know, of some particular area? So you're not alone in just, it was, it was a huge struggle for me, and I continue to put that question out as I shared this with groups, and continued to find a lot of disagreement about how and where you would start doing that. I also, on the grocery store specifically, within the assessment, call that one out specifically as one of the most challenging things that we could do to place a grocery store, I mean, even if we were wanting to, it, you know, not sure that that's the highest leverage or the easiest place to work, so...
What's that?
That would never come out.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, you know, when you talk about impacting quality of life for people, I mean, which is one of the things that I think is, as a council, you know, that's one of my charges, is how do we improve the quality of life for our constituencies? I mean, a grocery store is really, is pretty damn basic.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, to have access to fresh fruit and vegetables, to wholesome foods, and to, you know, reasonably priced foods is challenging, you know, I mean, in the areas that I represent, and it's, it's just, you know, I mean, it really is a big issue, but how do we, how do we encourage that? How do we get there?
And one other note, if you haven't heard about it, the Lane Coalition for Healthy Active Youth is working on a Healthy Corner Stores Initiative, where they're specifically trying to get some of that produce and fresh food into some of our local, Dairy Mart actually has partnered with LCA to try and make that happen. So there are some attacks, it, you know, may not get us all the way there, but...
Well, I think the folks at Dairy Mart do a good job, they're very good community neighbors.
Yeah.
But there's a lot of mom and pops that are challenged by the overhead of what that talks, of what that means, you know, when you talk about refrigerated food and the work that they have to do.
Pat? Your time's way over.
Oh, hush! I'm sorry, Mayor. I apologize.
I'd have to give my time to Councilwoman Dees. You did.
I thought you were telling him to be quiet.
You know, regarding, I just wanted to bring up a point regarding small grocery stores. We look at the Royal Node, there's an Albusen store, a newly remodeled Albusen store, and the adjacent, our Dairy Mart and another convenience store, all three are very busy, you know, they address different needs entirely. But if you want to see a convenience store that really does match the neighborhood convenience store model, if you look at the Servue Market, which is located on West Irwin and Barger Drive, they have a complete grocery section, and really, you can do your entire shopping there, within a short walk of lots and lots. So it can happen, if you look at Councilor Brown's store downtown, if we have those stores all over town, and you go, it's on that grocery street.
Depends on the kind of subsidies.
Oh, you better say that loud. Akiva for every neighborhood, yes, yeah. Well, I will say that in the Whittaker neighborhood, when the Safeway left, they got the Apple, which sort of specializes in those harder neighborhoods to locate, so that's one thing. The other thing that I thought of in your conversation was that when we had the Neighborhood Summit, one of the topics of conversation was about how, trying to set up situations where things do evolve out of neighborhoods, where you do sort of take our matching grant issue, and you, and you build it up so that you create, you try to support people doing what they already want to do, so you have a lot of energy coming out of the neighborhood to make something happen. You're not imposing it on them, they are wanting it, and will work on to make it happen, and our job is, would be to help them overcome some barriers to get there, right? And so that was kind of the conversation we heard a lot of in that particular, in that particular summit. Any other questions, comments, anybody? Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, sweetie.
Interesting food for thought, and come up again in the Envision Eugene conversation. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So the next item on our agenda this evening is items of interest and items in committee reports, and we've got the Human Rights Commission, if you guys can look at the list, Sustainability Commission, have you got anything from that that you want to add to the other conversation we've already had, Alan?
Well, actually, the work plan for the Sustainability Commission is coming to us in a week, a week on the 19th, so we'll be spending a lot of time on that, but they, obviously, we've been spending time on the Climate and Energy Action Plan and Envision Eugene, but developing the work plan for the last year. And we did two retreats to create that work plan, so they'll be coming to us on the 19th.
And Pat, anything on the Human Rights Commission that you want to mention?
I do indeed, and I'm not going to go into a great deal of depth, because in two weeks, we have a presentation of the Human Rights Commission, a joint meeting with the Human Rights Commission, and I think Council Ortiz has heard some of the topics that are going to be discussed. It's going to be very interesting, kind of groundbreaking in some areas, and the Human Rights Commission is on the cusp of a significant change in the way it provides the services to the city of Eugene. It's pretty exciting, really, where the Human Rights Commission really is going to be doing some things that have some teeth, more than just reactive, more actually prescribing directions for the future. The city manager prescribed a listening project that was very well-attended, very diverse, and also, it, I don't know how many hours staff put in on that, it's hundreds of hours, it's just remarkable. We're going to hear some of the results of that, based on Human Rights Commission work and on compiling the results, we'll hear some of that on the 24th of this month, and I think that's an entire 90-minute presentation, a 90-minute joint, joint meeting, so please be ready for that, it's going to be an interesting, an interesting evening that we have that day. The other thing that I wanted to mention was something specifically regarding Bethel and our neighborhood. You know, when I first got on the council years ago, we had a few green spots out in Bethel that were called parks, they weren't really parks, they were just kind of green spots on the map, and we talked about that through the years, and I want to talk about one of those green spots, it's Golden Garden Park, where neighbors have put a lot of work into Golden Garden Park. The city's put a lot of resources into Golden Garden Park, and it really is a model for what can be done in partnership with neighborhood, neighbors, and with the... what can be done in, in partnership with neighborhood, neighbors and with the city. If you go out there, for instance, there's a jogging trail that goes all the way around the three large barrow pits, deep, large, deep barrow pits. But the city takes out, takes out barkamash and the neighbors, neighbors spread it. And Debbie and I went out there for a walk on Sunday around, a little bit before sunset. Excuse me, it was Saturday, Sunday, it was raining. It was beautiful, yeah, it was beautiful. And I couldn't even count the geese that were flying around out there and turtles and nutria. And we think we saw a beaver, and I've heard there are beavers there, but it's, if you have a chance, it's at the end of Golden Garden. It just is a wonderful piece of work that was put together by the city staff, by the, by the park bond that we passed, and, and really extensively by the folks who live directly in that area, so.
Thank you. George, how about Traveling County?
We had our regular meeting last month at the inn at Diamond Woods, and it's actually just not really too much going on, other than the everyday encouraging people to travel L.A.N.E. County. Tomorrow night at the Gateway Adventure Center, they're having their wine tasting that they do on the first Tuesday, the first Tuesday evenings at the, at the Adventure Center. Next month's meeting will be going over the CEO's, Kerry Westlin's annual evaluation, and I think it's going to be a pretty good evaluation. She does a remarkable job. And again, I just encourage people to get on the Traveling County website and just take a look at that and browse through it, and there's all kinds of exciting and interesting things. And if you'll indulge me a little bit, Mayor, we have a young man in our, he lives in my ward, Blake Shoemaker, Schumacher, that, he's an Eagle Scout, and his project was to build an ADA ramp at the old Willackensie Grange. And, you know, with the Willackensie Crossing going in right next door, I've been driving by every day and watching the progress on that, which, by the way, is remarkable amount of work going into the, the Willackensie Crossing. But I noticed a small group of people working on this ADA ramp. Well, he's completed it, and Friday morning, they're going to have a ribbon cutting ceremony, and I'm going to try to make it. I have to flex some of my hours at, at work. I'm going to try to make it. It's set for, I believe, 10:00 a.m. on Friday. And I would encourage any of our, my fellow councillors, if you can make it, the, this young man's put a lot of hard work in getting the donations and going through the permitting process and everything else, so. And as a end result, they've got a great ADA ramp at the old Willackensie Grange now. So, congratulations to him and congratulations to his parents for, both of them, for a job well done.
I look forward to seeing that. How about the Human Services Commission?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we've met a couple of times since I've last reported. Most of the time, the conversations is about what we're going to cut next. But trying to be on the more positive side, there's actually a subcommittee working on a summit that we're trying to find the scope and, and guidance of what it is we're trying to have the summit about, who the audience is, what the outcomes are going to be, who should be there, you know, panel, you know, pre-work and then kind of a work session, you know, so that subcommittee's been meeting.
Today.
Today, this is the third time, and hopefully we won't, hopefully they came up with some good ideas so that they could, the staff and them can move ahead. I just really encourage them to make sure that all our community partners are there because when we talk about human services, it isn't just the city of Eugene. It's L.A.N.E. County, it's, you know, City of Springfield, even, you know, the other organizations that, that make up of the Human Services Network, all the social service agencies. So, that's pretty much what's going on there. Can I go ahead and take a couple more minutes?
Sure.
So, last Friday night, there was a couple tables at the Central Latino Heritage, inaugural Heritage Dinner, and I attended, and it was a very well-attended event. The city manager, his wife, Chief Groves, Chief Kearns, and a group of young women from North Eugene, the Metta Group were our guests. And Chris was there, Councilor Pryor. And so we had a good time. It was a lot of fun and I was glad to see that, that, that happened. It was, it was a very nice socializing, socialization. I went to a town hall meeting in Junction City. Representative Hoyle had an open house, and also Pat Farr, Councilor Farr was there. The governor was speaking about the hospital, the mental health hospital out there, and just, it was a pretty interesting conversations, not having any, really, anything to do with it outside of being on the peripheral end, just wanting to show support. The community is tied between jobs and do we, do we, you know, are, is this really what we want to bring into our community, basically, is what I heard. And it was a small group of people that said that, but it was said. So, that was pretty interesting, and the governor's definitely committed to making sure that that happens and that the prison happens. I'm also, let's see, what else did I do? Oh, I went to the Latino Business Network gathering, which was Up Next Step on the 13th of September, and the next one is actually tomorrow night. And it is, oh my goodness, I didn't write it down. Anyway, go onto the chamber's website if you're interested in going to it. And they usually just do pretty much a round table, a discussion, meet and greet, and it's hosted by the chamber.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Chris, about the L.A.N.E. Council of Governments?
Yes, I was thinking about what might be a good focus, and so I put together what, kind of with the seven top items. I won't read the entire thing for you, but it really are, you know, the main issues that we've been dealing with, some of them you're already familiar with, and I just covered them quickly. But some of the other ones that are in here that I will just highlight are the award nominations. What's going around right now, in addition to the briefing, is the award nomination form. And they have a dinner on January 28th, and that's where they present awards for the best, not the best, it's a recognized elected official, a private citizen, a public employee, or an individual. And so they're open to nominations from anyone who wants to submit one. So, it's usually great and it's a, it's a very good dinner. And you're also all invited to come. It's at Building 19 over at L.C.C. Also, probably the other main thing to mention is that George Kleppel has resigned, tendered his resignation as executive director. That really is a function of his PERS benefits. He loses a significant amount of PERS if he stays after November 30. So, what the board has done is accepted his resignation as the full-time executive director and then kept him on contract as they searched for his replacement. So, we're in the process of putting together a search committee. They will go through the regular process of identifying candidates, interviewing the whole, the whole process, and hopefully have a replacement for him in the spring. So, that's the timeline for that. That also then leads to Judy Bolta, who I think all of you know, Mayor Coburn, she was the vice chair slated to become the chair of the YLCOG Board. She's term limited out, plus some of the other issues going on with regard to her job have caused her to say, I can't really serve as chair next year. Since we're going through this search process and a number of other initiatives, they asked me if I would stay on for one more year, and I said I was willing to do that, as long as it didn't become a habit.
There he is.
Yeah, don't want to go there, don't want to do that. So, I will stay one more year to get through the search process and get a new executive director hired, and then Al King is going to be the vice chair for this year, who will then move into that position. So, we'll all look forward to that. Those are the main, those are the main highlights that I had.
Thank you, Chris. Anything else you want to talk about in terms of other activities or anything?
Not right now. The Latino dinner was, was interesting, it was nice.
Alan? MPC?
Yeah, MPC, the big thing that we've, I'll speak slower, George. The big thing that we've been working on is the regional transportation plan, which incorporates the list of all the projects that are slated for the next 20-plus years in terms of transportation, auto, bus, pedestrian and bike. And we just approved, or preliminarily approved the list of projects that are, they get broken out by, they have funded names, basically, ones that are ready to fund or have funds and, and future projects that are prospective. So, we're in the process of finalizing that list and moving the regional transportation plan. Our local transportation plan, the trans plan, will, is supposed to be consistent with the regional transportation plan, but unfortunately, they're not in sync in terms of, of process. It's probably a good thing for staff. And when, when our trans plan is completed, which we'll be doing over the next year, the RTP, which we're going to adopt in, coming up in the fall, will be made consistent with them. And then the last meeting that we had, it had a very interesting presentation, and staff floor on the slide, plus the, you can watch it on Metro Television, but it was a presentation by the manager of TriNet's business assistance team with their MAX line. And she did a, is doing an amazing job in, in the Portland metro area in terms of creating a program that is very comprehensive in assisting businesses along the routes of where they're putting in MAX. And so much so that now the business leader, businesses are actually clamoring to have the route be on their street. And they have a whole bunch of, it's not just one little thing or one big thing, it's a whole bunch of little things that they do to, to help businesses, making sure that they, they do the construction on a rolling thing, with the MX project, and that they have appropriate signing, that they actually bring people there. TriNet, if they have meetings, they bring, they do the meetings at restaurants in the area that's under construction, and there's some business loans. So, we've actually started working on that, the city and, and L.T.D. to, to work towards a similar type of, of program for the MX line that's going out to the west. So, and that was just a great example of what can be done and how successful it can be.
Thank you. Have any other items you want to bring up while you're there?
Oh, yeah, I did, I actually had a couple. There was one about energy conservation in our packet a while ago. We had, energy efficiency pays off. Since the inception of the energy management program here at the city, since 1995, we've received over $1 million in energy efficiency incentives from E-Web and, and the Energy Trust. And currently, there's seven projects that are, in, in pools and some buildings, alternative steam heat and heating and cooling, and that's another $250,000 on top of that million. So, those are the types of incentives that are available to us. There's also this, a series of, of recreation, adult services is doing a series on adult, senior services and specifically on hospice care. They're on their website, but the next one coming up is caring for the caregiver on October 25th, and dealing with, with grief on the 29th of November, and then pain management on December 14th. I think those are really helpful for people that are going through that kind of stuff. And I wanted to make special note of our parking manager, Jeff Petrie, was elected to the board of directors of, in every, this just proves that every, every subject matter has its own organization, Pacific Intermountain Parking and Transportation Association, PIPDA, he's now on the board of directors, so congratulations to Jeff.
Something for everyone.
And finally, I noticed this in, in The Guard the other day, in the editorial section, it was the, it said, it was titled, "lowest in the west Oregon's total business tax burden is relatively light." And it was an Ernst &amp; Young, accounting for Ernst &amp; Young, in conjunction with the Business Funded Council on State Taxation, found that Oregon has a lower business tax in all but four other states in the country, all of them on the west, are on the east coast. And they did a comprehensive look at all the business taxes, from sales tax to property taxes, to grocery receipts tax, to licenses and all these different fees, and, and took into account measures 66 and 67, and we still came in fifth best, if you look at it from that perspective. And we were at business taxes of 3.6% of all of our state economic, economic activity. California at 5.2 and Nevada, or Washington at 5.4, and we were at 3.6%. So, it is a good place to do business. Other people are watching this, please come here and do business.
Mike, do you have anything you want to?
I do, Mayor, just a couple of quick things. George Polling and I had the opportunity here a couple of weeks ago to attend the Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting. And I have to tell you, I can remember two meetings in five years that were more well-attended than that one was, and those had to do something with the potential hospitals, I recall. But it was, it was extremely well-attended. There were, there were dozens and dozens and dozens of people there, which is odd for that Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting. And they had the vote to separate into the three organizations, the Good Pasture Island Neighborhood Association, the Northeast Neighbors, and then retain the Cal Young area in a smaller area. That'll come to us for final approval, but I thought you might want to know that it met with a unanimous vote amongst a huge room of people. It was conducted in a way that I just, I still admire, both Mike Kennison on staff, who did a lot of hard work, and John Mbersky, who did a fantastic job as current president of Cal Young, to shepherd that process through, get, bring everybody along with them along the way, and just do a really, really fucking job on something that's been, it's been discussed for at least five years that I know about and probably more. But they got it done effectively with everybody being happy about it, and that's going to come before us. So, I just want to congratulate those guys. Secondly, we voted some time ago to extend a SNAPs grant, a Strategic Neighborhood Assessment Program grant, to the River Road and Santa Clara neighborhoods. And they've been conducting what they're calling SCROLL right now, because we don't have enough acronyms around San Diego. It's the Santa Clara River Road Outreach and Learning Project. And it's been a pretty extensive effort to try and make sure that everyone in Santa Clara and River Road understands the effects of both transition, growth, Envision Eugene, all of the discussions that we're having around transportation and planning and how it affects the folks out there. They're doing a fairly extensive education process so that when it comes time for us to finish Envision Eugene, they can use the SNAPs stuff to do more of, of a kind of refinement plan for the area. And they had their first rather large-scale SCROLL meeting the other night that I attended. And again, it was, it was a huge attendance over at Madison Middle School with maps up around, and a great support from, from city staff to help folks in that area understand what they're likely to see and have a voice in it, so.
Great, good. Betty?
Well, starting with the good stuff, I attended the inauguration of the worm bin at the Masonic Cemetery. And it was really great. It was a great example of a neighborhood matching grant being used and of neighbors cooperating. And it's, they're little red worms.
It was the visual that I was having.
People bring their...
Things.
People bring their...
I used to have them in my classroom.
Their garbage. And it's actually, they put it in, it's locked, you can't get into it. They put in the goods, the bad, the stuff they don't want anymore and take out the good stuff at the bottom, which is compost. And it was really a good use of city money, I think. They, they put a lot of work into it. And there was quite a crowd there for the inauguration, the slug queen was there.
Inappropriate.
She spoke. Though they, some people wanted to touch the worms and some didn't, but it was a good neighborhood. And it helps, it's helped save the city dump and also contributes to good food because the compost will help those people grow food. So, it's, if you want to go look at it, it's at the north end of the Masonic Cemetery in the, in, sort of adjacent to the alley.
I'm going to worm your way up.
We've had those for years and years.
Some things that constituents have spoken to me about, some concerns, a really big, a really important, and I already mentioned this to Kirk Cory, but the school crossing, the way to cross the school up by the Camus Ridge School. Now that Crest, now that, no, that was, now that Parker is closed, a lot of children are crossing 30th Avenue, which, in a very dangerous spot. And I had noticed that, then some people have called me since I noticed it, but little, I see little boys riding their bikes up the street, and I know that they aren't going to walk up those steps with their bikes to get, there is a pedestrian overpass, but they're not going to go up there. So, it's really a big safety issue, which I had already mentioned to Kurt and some constituents, though not my constituents, I guess, they're technically Allen's constituents, have talked to me about it. But I think it's something we ought to do something about before someone gets killed. People are still concerned about the overpark, about getting out of it if they don't have a credit card. Park there in the evening and you can't get out. And I've, I've heard of people cussing, standing there cussing, and I also just heard about someone who was, I think this was in a letter to the editor, a woman standing there crying because she couldn't get out.
John wrote about that.
Who?
John, in Revelations.
Okay.
I'm not touching it.
Not John. And I've heard some concerns about the bikes blocking people from sitting downtown, and that's my concern too. Not John. And I've heard some concerns about the bikes blocking people from sitting downtown, and that's my concern, too. And that's it. But all of you go see the worm bin. It's really amazing.
Didn't use any acronyms.
Thank you.
George?
Just a couple of things briefly. The bikes have been removed.
Oh, good.
I think it was a fabulous example of cop art. I went to, a couple of weeks ago, I went to the police promotion ceremony. And several women in records and evidence in 9/11, 911 got promotions and new responsibilities. Three patrol officers were promoted to sergeant, and two sergeants were promoted to lieutenant. And, let's see, several meetings with constituents during our so-called break, and a meeting with the Human Services Subcommittee with Councilor Pryor and Councilor Ortiz, to try to figure out what, how to satisfy the growing needs. Pretty hard task, but hopefully, we'll be able to figure something out. Last thing, Saturday, went to another weed party at Civic Stadium. Got literally peppered by blackberry vines.
Did you say a weed party?
Let's see. Councilor Brand went to a weed party and got peppered.
A South UG weed party? I'm not sure I understand. Could you explain that to me?
There's no girl operating.
That's what they can find.
I promise. We chop weeds and we chop the blackberries. The place is pretty good.
Sorry, George.
Any volunteers for next time?
Nobody's smoking.
It was just too easy. Just a couple items. I'm continuing to attend the Civilian Police Academy. Two more sessions this week. Over the, I think it was over the weekend, Friday, maybe, I can't even remember anymore. I went to the Good Works Film Festival, which is of interest to us because it's a good film festival, but also because former city councillor Cynthia Wooton, that's her film festival project. I want to thank Betty for running the meeting while I was gone to the League of Oregon Cities. At the League of Oregon Cities, we were recognized for Envision Eugene, so that was a good thing. I'm heading next week on behalf of all of us to the Rail Evolution Conference, so Betty's going to have to step in for a couple more meetings. I met with Commissioner Stewart, talking with him about long-term public safety solutions that he'll be bringing forward to us to consider. And went to the Regional Solutions Meeting with the governor over, I'm on the advisory committee for the Regional Solutions Center, and a discussion with regional partners about how we can take what we're doing and make some economic headway for our area. So, those are just a few of the, what seems like myriad of things that have been going on. City manager was actually out of town, taking a trip, having a really good time.
Yes, yes, and yes.
Do you have anything you wanted to share?
No, ma'am, I don't. Thank you.
He actually did the Columbia Gorge, I believe, right?
I did. We spent some time up in Columbia Gorge. Beautiful area.
All right. With that, I think we've all shared everything we've been up to, at least a small portion of it, and then we'll, did you want to say something?
Consent calendar?
Oh, we could do the consent calendar. I don't see why not. Let's look at it. I don't think there's anything. There's nothing on there.
Amazing.
If you want to, anybody have a problem with that? Betty, you want to approve the items on the consent calendar? Moved and seconded. Discussion, all those who approve indicate. Eight in approval in support and none in opposition, it passes. And then, we'll take up the rest of the agenda at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you.